And so we're live now and since it might take a little bit, don't panic if there's nobody here initially, especially since we didn't necessarily have huge registration, which is fine. It is Saturday and a lot of people are like, hey, Saturday, it's not, I don't think it's snowing out. There's Bonnie.
I did a meeting with Tom and a meeting with our town administrator, separate ones, like community town halls. And these are two examples where zero people showed up. So one time I just talked with Tom for an hour.
We already have three people, four people here. So that's great. Hello, everybody. Let's go ahead and get going, Commissioner.
Thank you, Michelle. Good morning, everyone. Excuse me. My name is Jody Shadick McNally. I'm your Lamar County Commissioner for District Three, and I'm so thrilled to be here today. Thank you for joining us. Behind me is a picture of Lily Lake and Rocky Mountain National Park. I'll just introduce myself real quick. If you don't know me, I'm born and raised in Longmont in Northern Colorado. My mom was actually born, well, her family, she lived in a farmhouse on December birthday. She was the first person that they drove to Greeley to have the baby, but all the other folks were born in the farmhouse. So I don't think that farmhouse is there anymore. But you know, I have some fond memories and pictures of my mom showing me when they ran around the bottom of Carter Lake before they made Carter Lake with the family. They went up there and ran around before it became Carter Lake. My uncle said drove cattle and horses up and down the Big Thompson for winter and summer pastures. So I have a long history. I have cousins in Berthold, second, third cousins in Berthold. I don't know if they'll show up today. I haven't seen them in years. I'm hoping someday we'll reconnect, but it's just a long history and I'm very proud to be here today. I still can remember eating at Wayside Inn with fried chicken. And so it's really an honor and pleasure to serve you all and be and work on your behalf. I'm very honored to earn the trust of the voters and I'm the first woman to ever serve in this seat. So I'm very, very excited to have that honor and I'm really thrilled today to be here. I want to thank and welcome my guest, Berthold Marywell Karspec, who is just a great guy and such a great leader for Berthold. I've really enjoyed getting to know him over the last year or so. Actually, a couple of years, right, Will, we've been talking and looking for great partnerships between the county and Berthold. And I want to also think-
Twenty seventeen?
Yeah, twenty seventeen, actually probably four years. Yeah, you're right. Because the mental health initiative-
The behavioral health thing.
Yeah, you came and wrote postcards with me at a coffee shop to, for the Behavioral Health Initiative, and I'll never forget that. That was, that was great. Not too many folks do that. And then I want to thank our public information, well, communication specialist. Tell me, Michelle, this, Michelle Byrd, you'll have to tell me your title and welcome Baby Yoda. And I want to thank you all for being here today. So I'm going to let, we're going to let Michelle kind of explain this new format and, and then we'll kind of talk about what we're trying to accomplish with these community conversations. And, but I'm going to let Michelle kind of share how this works and then we'll talk, go on to our next topic.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Commissioner. Good morning, everybody. My name is Michelle Byrd. My official title is Public Affairs Director. However, I will go by whatever, sometimes people call me a public information officer. I get communications specialists. So long story short, I kind of oversee communications for the county. But really quickly, I wanted to walk you guys through how you can engage with us this morning. The intent of this meeting is a conversation, right? And being virtual, it's always a little more difficult than it would be in person, but hopefully we will find a way to make it happen this morning. There's a couple of different ways you can talk to us this morning. First is that Q and A box you'll see at the bottom of your screen. You guys are probably used to seeing a chat box. This is a lot like a chat box. So if you have questions that come up at any point this morning, feel free to put them in the Q and A box and we will address them. But we do actually have an option where you can talk to us, you know, like you would face to face. You should see an option to raise your hand. If you click that button, it lets me know that you want to talk to us for a little while. Maybe you have a question, maybe you have a comment. And then I will, I just have a few buttons here I got to push. And then I'll walk you through how you unmute yourself and we can actually have a face to face conversation. So that's how you can engage with us and we encourage you, of course, the, the point of this morning, we wouldn't call it a conversation if we didn't want you to converse with us. So we encourage you guys, ask us questions or comments and we look forward to the morning. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Michelle. And again, I appreciate you coming on and helping facilitate today. Then I can focus on the conversations and not worrying about who's doing what on Zoom. So thank you for that. So I'm going to just share a few updates and then turn it over to Will Karspec and let him talk a little bit about some updates for Berthold. And then we thought we'd just leave some time for you all to ask questions and hear from you and hear about your concerns. And at the end, I really want to, you know, have a conversation with you. Michelle's going to put up a little survey. I just want to see, I want to make these community conversations with commissioners something. And we're not just going to do them. We want to make them important and impactful and intentional and, and see what time and days work best for you, whether we do the monthly or every other month. I will be meeting monthly, Will Karspec and I have committed to kind of having conversation every month. And I'm also going to be trying to touch base with a couple of town board members. I know Mr. Hyman, I have him on my list to get scheduled, but he's next. And, but I welcome and anytime you're always well, welcome to reach out and contact me or email me and I'm sure Michelle will put my phone numbers and my email in the chat. So first I'd like to just talk about some things that are happening with the county. I've only been sworn in just about forty days. I think we're about forty days and boy, we've done a lot of work. So and I actually got some news today, so let me bring that up. So it looks like we got from the State Department of Human Services Emerging Management that we were, that we received, that we got this small business, small business association declaration, which will be great because that will mean that we can get some more state and this will also help with some federal stuff too for our small businesses and our community members. So that's brand new from yesterday and I'm assuming I can share that because that was told to me yesterday. So I figure it's probably public now. I also have, we have a housing survey. We have three strategic goals as the county. Coming in midstream of these goals, we have, they started in 2019 with the former Board of County Commissioners and their four-year strategic plan. And there's three goals and there's goal one, which now I'm the gold steward, goal steward of, and goal two and goal three. You know, it doesn't mean I'm only going to be focused on goal one goals because actually some of the things are really important to me if I fall in goal two. But Commissioner Kepalas was a gold steward for number, goal number two, which is housing and childcare, you know, addressing some of those needs. And, you know, we always joke around with him. He was going to wrestle us all to the death to keep that goal because he really, we're all passionate about that area, but he's been working on it and making some progress. And one of those, so one of those important things is we need to hear from all stakeholders and especially I feel from the southern part of the county. Berthold, you know, I was, I live in unincorporated Lamar County. I live southwest of Loveland. So it's almost quicker sometimes for me to get into Berthold than downtown Loveland because it's quicker. So I, I, and as you know, I've got a history there. So I want to make sure we get our voices and input from the southern part of the county and especially the Berthold area, which is growing and changing. And I know housing is inattainable, affordable housing is really hard for a lot of folks right now. So there's a housing survey that's going to be open till the end of the month. And so I'm asking for your help. I need your help. I need your input. So I'm hoping you'll, you'll get on the survey. It's kind of a cool little interactive website and it'll take you five to 10 minutes. You know, I don't think you have to leave your name unless you want to. And it's, it's very, it's, it's good, it's a good, it's a good survey. I found it very engaging. So, and I'm sure Merrick, Merrick Karspec will help me kind of get that out too. And I'm hoping he'll fill it out and share it with important stakeholders that he feels are important to share. We're also in the middle of our county code phase two adoptions and working on that. And part of that is important with a sign code update and our oil and gas regulations, which I know is important for Mayor Karspec. He's been very involved with that topic. And so, so I know, Will, do you want to just be first names today? Or you want to say mayor and commissioner? How do you want to do that today? I'll call you Mayor Will. How's that?
Sounds good.
So, so the state, according to the state law, there's these regulations that the state had to work on and they've been working on it for a long time. Lots of stakeholders, a very comprehensive exhaustive process to really look at these regulations for oil and gas and gas industry and extraction industry. Because until 2019 and 20, we had no regulations at all in Lamar County. And these are only to help protect our clean air and water and our residents and their health. And so especially with the kind of air quality that we have, it's really important that we're monitoring and, and kind of make, making sure that we're looking at the environment and health and safety and welfare of our residents. So the state, at the end of last year, finally came up with what they call their baseline of regulations. And by that law, Lamar County has to be above though, but be at there or above. And we can choose because they put the, the more of the power into local government. So the county commissioners in the county can actually have, has a little bit more say in how those regulations can be stronger in areas. So we have to be at the state level, which right now we're not. We have a few that are now down here and we're going to bring, we have to at least bring them up to here. But I think the will of the board, and I think we've said this at a few meetings the last couple of weeks, is we're going to try to take some of these above and beyond, especially because Lamar County is so unique and we have so many beautiful spaces like behind us. So, so those are happening and there's a survey too that's, we have asked as a board to keep that open till the end of the month and would love to have your input on that as well. So we will have a work session regarding this on Monday at 1:30. And those work sessions are televised and I, you can watch them on the Board of County Commissioners website and they're also recorded so you can go back and watch them later in case you're working and you can't watch YouTube on the side, like some of my friends do. They watch meetings on the other side. And also we're having a goal update for goal number one, which is my goal, my, as a gold steward, goal steward. And that will be Monday morning. And that goal is kind of a lot more with infrastructure and county broadband, especially real broadband initiative. So those are some things that I know are important for the southern part of the county. So lots going on. And then the other thing I'm really excited about is I am a liaison for the Behavioral Health Council and we have, the board has set aside from that sales tax initiative that we passed in 2018. We're so grateful for the strong support from Mayor Will that he was such a big champion and supporter of that. Those, that sales tax initiative is, has gathered that money and it goes only into that pot of money that go, that goes to what the voters approved with that ballot language. And part of that valid language is that we put money into grant programs or an impact fund, which is grants into the agencies and nonprofits can apply for throughout the county to get grant money to help extend, amplify or extend their resources and be able to do more, to provide resources to our residents throughout the county. So in the first year, 2019, we had $1 million set aside. Yes, last year, 2.5 million, then this year, 2.5 million, which is great because we have seen a lot of great programs do very well. And I'm going to showcase one. And I know Mayor Will, we're going to work really hard in getting more agencies to apply for Berthold. So that's the goal I want to have with you. But for instance, let's talk about Estes Park. I was up at a town hall with Congressman DeGuss at the town of Estes Town Hall. And Fire Chief David Wolfe approached me from Estes Park Fire Department. And he said, hey, I have this idea. Can you help me talk to Congressman DeGuss about how I can find some federal grant money to fund this program? And I said, what is it? And he talked to me about it. I said, you know what? I think this will fit the Behavioral Health Grant. And sure enough, I, we applied within two weeks and he got it. And it was, he was, he was funded at 50% of the cost of his program. It was so successful in 2019 that last year, 2020, he was funded 100%, which was great because I'll tell you about this program. As you know, with COVID and trauma and wildfires and going on scenes and accidents and, and things, natural disasters, there's a lot of stress on first responders. And Estes Park Fire Department is mostly volunteers. There's only a couple of paid folks and we only really have three or four paid fire departments. All the rest throughout the county are volunteers. And that takes a lot of money and time and, and there's not a lot of resources afterwards. You know, it's stressful. We want to help provide behavioral health services to help them talk through kind of deep stressed, what's the word I'm looking for, Michelle? After debrief, after an event, kind of talk it out so they can have someone who understands. So, yeah, debrief. And so the fair chief came up with this idea to have this kind of program where they'll train each other, kind of train the trainer so they can help each other look out for each other and have kind of that basic mental health training. And it's, it's been very successful. And now he wants to try to do it so other volunteer fire departments throughout the county can have similar programs. So it's very exciting. And so that's what we do with that money. And then the rest of the money goes into helping build the Behavioral Health Center, which will be at Tat Hill and Trilby in that corner, this northwest corner. And there's a sign there and when you drive by, you can see it. We broke ground or the former commissioners, they were very gracious, invited us to the ground baking in December and that works going forward. So I'm excited about the progress for that. And then let's talk vaccines. So I know we are making progress. I know there's several that are still not on, have not received their vaccine. I wanted to say be patient. We're not getting as many vaccines as we're ready to go. Lamar County Health Department has been phenomenal. They work so hard. If you think about it, they're contact tracing, educating, trying to, you know, do testing out at the ranch and other locations. They did the Level Up Program where they had to scramble around Christmas time to get all these businesses certified and, and checked so they could open up under certain degrees with the Level Up Program. And now they're doing setup for vaccinations and these, when they're, have a system where they're going to be able to do a very large mass vaccination site out at the ranch and they're working on pop-up sites around the county for those who are, those underserved communities that might need more resources and outreach. They have been doing a lot and working 24/7 for months throughout a pandemic, which is historic. So, so we get only so many allocation from the state and the state was only getting so much from the federal government. And until about mid-January, as we know, the administration changed. They would ask for a certain allotment, the state would request a certain allotment on Mondays before mid-January and they wouldn't know until Thursday if they were going to get any. And usually they only got a small fraction of what they asked. And then on that day, Thursday, after that Monday, they would try to take that small allot and put it out to the rest of the state. So in the beginning, we were only getting about 80,000 doses a week for the whole state. And when you had to divide that up between 64 counties, that's when they came up with that tiered system of 1A, 1B, 1B1, 1B2, 1B3, all those different things. They're trying to get everyone in a, in a science-driven data approach about who's most at risk and who do we have to vaccinate? And so of course, we had to vaccinate our first responders. Those are in the hospitals and dealing, you know, on the front lines, like my husband, who's been in the ER and ICUs. He was one of the first vaccinated, but he works every single day and week in the, right there in the, in the frontline. Then we had the long-term care facilities and those workers and those that are in their first responders. And now we've worked down into our 70-plus. And so the goal was to get as, as much as 70-plus, those older adults, 70 and older, vaccinate as much as possible. And right now we're about 63, 64% of 70 and older in our community that are vaccinated. And now we've moved into still putting them up there as a priority, but we want to get people what we see in the queue. So you can enter and get into the system so you're ready to go and you have all the information so they can contact you when a vaccine becomes available. On top of that, they have to take, you know, so many, with those vaccines, they have to take so many for first doses, but they also have to follow up with the timing with the second doses. So once they get that first dose, they have to make sure they have enough doses ready to, with the right time because it is, they have to have it in that certain timeframe for the second doses. So this is quite, I've been in all these state meetings and I've been advocating, please help us get more. How does this work? And to understand how they're trying to make sure everyone gets their second dose on time, it's quite the operation and they're constantly evaluating and tweaking and going forward. So with that whole big explanation, I just wanted to show, tell you that I, I, I know people are frustrated and I know people are worried and, and I have been advocating and trying to make sure those who, who are underserved or don't have access or are isolated, we're trying so hard to reach out to you. So I have helped some people get a vaccine lately, but not that I'm saying don't do that, but what I have done, and this is what you can do as well. There is a number in case you don't have really great computer access or you know of a friend or a neighbor. And I know some of you on this call are fantastic, knowing who in your neighborhood and in the Berthold community maybe don't have great access to internet. So Michelle's going to put in the chat a phone number that on Monday through Friday from 9:00 to 4:30, you can call and talk to a live person. If they're busy, if they have a lot of calls and they can't get to you right then, I think there's a message machine that'll get back to you. They will help you get into the system so you can get in the queue or in electronic line for those vaccines. And of course, you're still going to be prioritized as a 70 and older. And then there's the teachers. Now we've just added 50,000 folks in Colorado or in Lamar County, I think. Is it Lamar County, Colorado? There are 65 to 69. And so those folks just entered the system as well. But that doesn't mean we bump everyone else off. Everyone's still in the system. So Michelle will put that in the chat along with the phone number, which is 498-5500. And I also want to add that we, as a new program that started this week, and I know there's other resources, and I've talked to some of those folks because two weeks ago, those folks that I had call and get into the system that were older and 70 and older, and when I actually lost her husband at that same time, he fell and hit his head and I, she, it's been shared publicly, but we were able, and she's, she was not able, she doesn't have a computer. She didn't know how to operate. So we were able to have her call this number and it was, sure enough, in two weeks, she's got her first shot. She called me last night. She got her first shot. And so we, those folks also had trouble getting transportation to get that shot. So there's a system, when you schedule your appointment, if you're having trouble finding transportation or maybe you don't, you can't drive to that site, to your healthcare provider, there is, there are resources. You need to tell the person on the phone or where you sign up that you have trouble with transportation or a barrier to transportation and they will be able to connect you with this new service called One Call One Click, which is also doing old rides for older adults and those with disabilities that need to get rides to connect them. But this is a different system and it's not the same phone call that you would do for the others. You need to let the folks knowing, know when you schedule your appointment, you need help. If you have any questions, you have my numbers, my names. I don't want to do hundreds of people because I've only do a few that were very special because I was in a meeting and someone was very upset about their friend dying and his poor widow. And so, and they were in their 80s. So that was why it was, it was appropriate because they were in that age group. So I wanted to tell you there are resources and we want to do what we can to help you. Now, I know last week, it was put on Facebook and around it. Sunrise Health Clinic had five extra doses and then everyone scrambled trying to get the dose. And it did not, it was overwhelming for them. So there are call down sheets when people are, don't show up for appointments because we don't want to waste one dose because once the vials open, they have to use it up. So that's another thing to make sure these, you find out if you can get on some of these call back or call down sheets because, and then you have to make sure you're available because you'll have to go right away if that spot opens. So there's, they're working so hard. We're trying to do everything we can to reach out to those, especially the other 30% of those 70 and plus that are maybe not as easily accessible or know how to get these resources because they're not very tech savvy. My mom, we were so excited. She learned how to text my son for his birthday yesterday. That's taken six months to teach her how to learn to text. So it's just because she's, it's because she's so intimidated by technology. She's so afraid to do it wrong. And so now that she's doing it on her own, we're so excited. But that took a while because it, technology can be frightening and a little overwhelming. And even with me, I'm afraid that I'm going to, you know, download the wrong thing and mess this up or that up. So it's, it's important to know that the county's working, the health department's working very hard and it's just, it's availability of vaccines. And I know that the, the state and federal government are working very hard to get more vaccines. So that's a long story, but I know that's a big topic and I wanted to make sure when new, everyone's doing everything they can to get shots at arms. And let's see, what else did I want to say? There's a lot, but, so I, you know, there, I'm going to be getting a newsletter together once a month and I'll try to list some of these bigger things because you can follow all the newspapers and stuff, but there's some things I want to highlight. So soon I'll be having on my Facebook page or my website, a sign up for a separate county newsletter that will be separate, that's only focused on county issues and how, things that I think you should be aware of. So look for that coming up soon. I have a new assistant, volunteer assistant who's going to do that for me. So anyway, I'll turn it over to Mayor Will. I know I shared a lot of information, but I'm hoping you'll participate in the surveys and share this information about resources to your friends and family and your neighbors because this is how we get the word out about how important the county is and how we have a lot of resources out there. So Mayor Will, oops, he stepped away. I'm hoping you'll tell me if those are antique glasses behind you. They're very pretty.
I couldn't tell you because I'm not at my house. I'm at my mother's actually. Which ones are here? Oh, these ones. I'm sorry, I'm looking for like eyeglasses. Actually, these I got for her for gifts. I can tell you those aren't antiques, but, you know, she does love antiques. So I can imagine. Well, I, thank you very much. That's incredibly thorough. Um, I do deliveries, so I'm at my mother's house and she's actually filling in doing deliveries for me so I can be here. Anyway, that's incredible, just listening in on, on what you're doing right now, being on your second month on your first year. And all that was really great information. I already just forwarded along your survey or the housing survey to the board and to the planning commission, members of the planning commission. So hopefully we'll get some Berthold response. Your, what you brought up really kind of triggered some things I think would be great to talk about, including our own kind of transit efforts. You brought up Behavioral Health Policy Council. I noticed in our attendees today, we have Jim Anderson, who's our police chief. And I do want to recognize him just for, under the incredible amount of pressure he's been under in the last couple of months, for the last year of what's going on nationally. I think he's handled that exceptionally well. And I know the last month has been a ton of pressure, but after Sheriff Smith came down for the review, I can't say more about what he's done for the community. And I hope it shows on the Facebook. He made a post for his open coffee with the cop backup and the amount of responses he got from the community, as well as the amount of emails I'm receiving is a real testament to what he's been able to do since he's been here. So thank you to Sergeant Anderson. And that leads me into the Behavioral Health Policy Council as well because one thing we wanted to look at was having a full-time co-responder program for the Berthold area. Right now, I believe it's part-time, chief. Feel free to jump in, correct me. But that, that kind of triggers me that that might be something we want to look into as a town or see if we can get some partners in on that because that seems to be really valuable. I know Lamar County was a big advocate for, and Jim in particular, for this tax. So it's great being on the council, especially with you, Jody, now. And you get to see the hard work, all the hard work you put in, you get to see the results now. And it's just amazing that Lamar County is leading the way in the state really on how to offer these programs that were truly lacking earlier. So it's great when you have Boulder and Denver looking at you and how can we do that? I'm going to pull up my notes here too. Michelle, I'm going to send you, or I put it in the chat here. It's a, hopefully this is the right link. Yeah. So this is a link to-
So Mayor Will, if I can just interrupt for a second, I'd like to extend to Sergeant Anderson, you know, please, I'd love to sit down, have a cup of coffee and talk and maybe I can come to one of your coffees with a cop thing. And of course, I'd love to just come in and not, just to listen. I'd just love to, to come in and listen and hang out. And so I hope that I might be able to do that with you and I would welcome, you know, we could sit down and have a cup of coffee ourselves. I'd love to connect. And of, of course, Mayor Will Karspec, I would love to expand that program. I do think we had a meeting with the sheriff, under sheriff and all the other elected officials in Lamar County for lunch on Wednesday. And I, correct me if I'm wrong, Sergeant Anderson, I think we went from two to three with the co-responder program. I think it's, we just added up to three, but I would like to make sure that Berthold has a full-time one because I do think with the growth- Up to three, but I would like to um, make sure that Birthed has a full-time one because I do think with the growth and changes in. Um Laramo County, but I'll let Will, I'm sorry, Will, I want you to continue. Sorry, I didn't interrupt, but I just.
No, I, Jim popped up. I'd like to, I'm, I'm not aware, I think it's just the regional, I don't know if we have our own, it's full-time or part-time just for us. But uh if Jim's able to respond, that would be great for me to know if that's possible. I don't know if, Commissioner, if you'll allow that.
I'm here, so we'll give it a try.
Well, can hear you. That's great.
Um, we just, the sheriff's office just put on a third uh co-responder, absolutely. Um, the program we're gonna change is we're gonna have a co-responder actually assigned to. The contract towns, which is Wellington and Berthitt. And they're going to actually be in the towns. Um during their shift. So we also have a victim's advocate that's also coming down here full-time. Uh on Tuesdays. So we're really getting a lot of resources down here that. We can get to really quick when needed. The co-responder has been such a, a successful program. Um and, and the deputies love it. Um I love it. I think it's just fantastic. Um. I've been working directly with some of the um therapists and they're great. They're just fantastic. And to come into a situation that usually cops just go into and they're right there, ready to help. Is just, I ca- I can't say enough for it. It's fantastic. But um the third one is going through training right now. So as soon as they get done with training. Um we'll start the other program where we'll have one visiting Wellington and Berthitt.
That's fantastic. I'll share that with the board too. So um, yeah, that's awesome that we're gonna have one uh for us. And I've heard. Um, great things about it, so I, I appreciate it. Um.
So thanks Sergeant Anderson, and I think um, and Will, I think that was a great thing you brought up. And I, when you think about it though. You think about the number hours a day, a day, and you think about how many people there are. I do think we still need to advocate for adding it, you know. One or two more if we can find the funds to do that because um. When you break down how many, how many hours in a, in a week or a day and how many people we have, we certainly, I think uh. Need to add some more because I, I'm glad to hear Sergeant Anderson that you find that program so um impactful. And I, I don't know what you think about the program in Denver where they have just a um completely um. A mo- a mobile unit that just goes to all mental health um calls. And I think there are seven hundred and fifty calls they had. Um where they went out instead of um law enforcement, but law enforcement could come right away if they needed. And they didn't have to call um law enforcement for any of those calls. It was very successful. So do you ever see us going to a model where we would have so, just a separate unit go out just as a mental health response?
Well, after doing this for thirty-two years, I would really be nervous about that. Um having just. And I don't want to degrade them at all, but just having a civilian walk into a mental health situation. Especially if they're going through an episode. Um, I would, I would really hate to have them go in by themselves. I really would rather uh expand, like you said, Commissioner, about adding more. So we can actually have twenty-four hour coverage all the time. That would be fantastic. Um, we have so many mental health issues. Um we're one of the highest suicide rates and it's, it's just phenomenal. And to send a, a counselor into. A situation where this guy is suicidal, um he has nothing to lose. So I don't know if that program to me, now that's just my opinion, is that safe? And that's what it's all about, is keeping them safe. Both of them, the, the person that we're going to and also the counselor.
Really glad to have that feedback and I'm glad to hear that you think also if we could have someone twenty, you know. Twenty-four hours a day, co-responder available. I, that's something we're gonna, I'm gonna, I've been speaking about with my colleagues. On the board and we're just gonna see where we can do to kind of keep progressing to add more folks and would love to, I'm, we know, we're looking forward to partnering with the sheriff's department and. Um you know, seeing what we can do to kind of keep progressing that, especially as you say, it's just been so successful. I really appreciate your. Your insights and your feedback, Sergeant Anderson.
You're very welcome. And I'm also very, very excited about the mental health facility that we're gonna be building in between Fort Collins and Loveland. Um, one of the problems that we have is we really don't have very many options except for to put somebody in the hospital. And I would really like to see this program um just blow up. Because I want it to just, just work really well and give everybody resources. By bringing somebody to the hospital, that's not always the answer. And that's what I would really like to look for is the answer. And alcoholism, there's no place to go. I would really like to see those kind of um resources to be able to have. People that um have an episode, have an addiction. Um, to have a place to go. So I'm really excited about the, the facility that's gonna be built. And hopefully we can incorporate them along with our co-responders.
That's great. I, I know, you know, I've mentioned my husband works, been working in emergency medicine in Northern Colorado for thirty-plus years and. And you know, all throughout the years, and there's so many times where someone's sitting in the ER because that we've, we've been using for decades, the ER is our. Solution for mental health, behavioral health, trauma or crises. And sometimes there's nowhere to take them, so they'll sit. Twenty-four hours in the ER sometimes, and that's not a good, that's expensive. And not a effective way for treating us. So I'm hoping, we're really hoping that we can get the center, the groundbreaking will be this year. Um where we actually, well, we already did groundbreaking, but they're gonna start construction, but there's gonna be some um. We, we had a consultant to kind of help us look at naming it and some other factors for um kind of going forward. So I'm, I'm hoping Sergeant Anderson, because you have some insights, you might reach out to Lori Stoll and I'd love to have, make sure that you get to. Be interviewed by the consultant to kind of give some of your thoughts on um. The direction, you know, the, the naming and the, some of those stuff. I, I think it'd be great to have your input on that too. So reach out to Lori if you would, you know Lori Stoll, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just saw her the other day, but I've, I've talked to her about it and she's.
Okay, cool.
She's been at the town board meetings um and got the support of the town board and, and I know Lori. And she is very, very uh passionate about this. So I really, really think she's great. And I'll get with her and see if I can um give some input to the uh. The what, what were you saying?
It's kind of like, we're kind of trying to find a name and kind of um, I don't want to say a theme, but how we're going to help the public understand. How, how, what, kind of help us figure out how we educate and bring awareness and, and the naming and make it a welcoming place. So it's not kind of the detox center, but, but what it is, is it's more than that. It's this crisis hub. Um resource hub. And I don't know if you even, I, this is something I learned. We're gonna have a community room up in the, in the facility where people can rent the facility. The community room for meetings or um maybe um, uh family support groups or something. Um and so it's, it's something, every day I learn a little bit, a little bit of something new about the center. So. Um so we're looking at getting some feedback from um stakeholders about kind of um the naming and how we're gonna help. Um guess brand it so people understand what it is and how important it is. So um I'm really excited about that as well. So Mayor, I um, and Sergeant, I appreciate the input and I, I kind of been, sorry, let the mayor talk and then I cut him off, so I want to let him.
No, I, I think, yeah, I, I learned a lot right there, um about the co-responder and whatnot. Um. Chief, I think you brought this up, but just to double check real quick, um you would be able to directly drop off mental health uh patients to the facility, correct? Wouldn't have to go to the hospital, then, then transferred?
This is what I'm, I'm, I'm hearing. Let's just put it that way. I, I haven't got the, the final. This is what we're going to do. This is how we're gonna do it. I mean, there's still some um roadwork ahead before we uh find out. Uh the final um result of what we can do. And I'm sure hoping that we can um. Now there's some that need to go to the hospital. I'm not gonna say that we can't, but uh for the majority, I would really like to be able to have. That facility um, it uh available for us to be able to use it like that. So.
Okay, yeah, no, it makes total sense. And uh Commissioner, before you arrived, I know there was the uh groundbreaking, but due to COVID. Um participation necessarily was limited. Um but I hope there's a, gonna be a, a, kind of like a ribbon cutting or an, an open house when that thing's actually so.
Yeah. Yeah, I was at the groundbreaking and we had, you know, you'll see the pictures. If you, if you saw the front page of the Coloradoan. Um with the three new commissioners on it with all of our masks, that was actually on the site. The paper took advantage of. Let's begin the same, you know, socially distanced with their mask on, but there will be, you know, a ribbon cutting and um. And opportunities for, you know, everyone to come in and learn about what's available, how does this work? And we're very excited about that. And that's part of this. Um consultant and work um that we're using to, to, to uh. Figure out how we do that to kind of really engage the community because it is the community's behavioral health center. The taxpayers, it's their money, they're paying for it. They've approved the language. We're just, you know, executing the plan. And um I'm very excited about it. I know everyone on this call and Sergeant Anderson, Mayor. Carspec, you all are very excited about it. So it's, it's something we should be very proud of as a county because it is unique. And once again, Laramo County does things differently and I think we kind of set the, the model. We have a lot of people copying this now. You mentioned all those other communities calling and asking us how we did it. I get a call from Steamboat and they're advocates. How'd you do this? And uh what, when, how, you know, how could we get started? So um it's great to uh, you know, to be. Helping others do that, but you really, the whole intent was, what are the needs in Laramo County? What are, well, how can we best serve our residents? Laramo County is unique and special and we want to do um. Services and, and programs and structured things so it really fits the needs and for our staff, our residents. And our community and our, our county as a whole. So that's kind of um a focus and, and um it's, it's um exciting work.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Um, thank you. I think, let me cover, oh, so we have a uh, of course, our comprehensive plan, which has been going on a while now. Um it's getting to its final stages here. And um I think it's gonna be our best yet, just the amount of professionals we have involved in it. And a very uh extensive survey outreach. And we've got a lot of, a lot of good um points that we're listening to on how we grow in the future and, and what. Residents want to see. Um, so uh I believe our kind of, our initial. I want to say March, it might be April, but we'll kind of have the initial uh rollout of, of some of the ideas and, and maps and stuff like that. Um but for being on the committee, it's really cool to see um several different design firms and, and professionals and planners looking into what we do. Um, also, we have our transit uh master plan um that the board uh approved funding for, for consultants to. Um, work with all other government agencies and nonprofits to uh kind of plan what the birthed area transportation system looks like going forward. We're pretty rare in, in the community of our size to even have a shuttle or two. And um it used to be much more extensive. Prior to two thousand and thirteen and then due to some funding cuts, um. There was kind of a rollback in what we could offer. Um a nonprofit was formed and tried to help out called Rural Alternative for Transportation. And um trying to fill in some of those holes for the elderly and for the disabled to be able to get to work and to shop. And so we uh really wanted to partner with Ruth and, and the Raft team. And we're also gonna engage the NPO in Laramo County. Uh CDOT and uh really anyone, anyone that has uh anything to say about mobility. And uh see what we can do going forward to get more regular service and kind of just re-envision how we do things. And I'm really excited about that. And uh Michelle, I forwarded or I think I sent it to everyone, but a, a link. It might take a little while to download. I don't know if it's a possibility. I wanted to show, i- if not, it's fine. Um. But Birthed got a six point five million dollar CDOT grant um for something called the Mobility Hub on I twenty-five. So. Along with our new uh on and off ramps and our new interchange, we're gonna have a um. Essentially uh an oversized bus stop. And it's called the Mobility Hub because it's not just a bus stop. The idea is to have. Different tri- type, different modes of transportation available. And um. It's really cool to not only see the state is looking, is, is looking into this, we're actually doing it. And uh the transportation committee or commission saw fit. To award Birthed the six point five million so we could have one along with Loveland and Fort Collins. Um so. In the video here, it's actually Centerra's uh which is um halfway funded by government um Loveland. And CDOT and some federal money. And the other half, I think, is Centerra's funding. Um and so it, it, there's this really a good design, uh has a lot of interior finish work. Ours rolling out will be a lot more um. Spartan, I should say, but the important thing is that we have one and we're a community of ten thousand people, which is pretty, pretty crazy that we're, we're getting something like this. So along with our transit study, uh we're uh very likely have talked to other trustees and our administrator about this. We're gonna have a regular shuttle going out. To connect with the bus thing. So folks can get to Denver, to Fort Collins, Glenwood Springs, uh Colorado Springs. Um via the bus thing. And I think it's ten dollars for um full price, but if you're a senior. Um or a student, it goes down to six fifty, I believe. So super cheap, wifi, super comfy and uh it's just right in our backyard. So that's pretty cool. Um, let's see here before, I don't want to miss anything else here. Oh, I just want to bring up the uh One Call One Click, um Commissioner, that's uh, it's great you brought that up. So I brought up that Raft program, our nonprofit, and Ruth really needs a shout out. She was instrumental. And trying to push this. And actually, the town for a while was a municipal pilot program for the service. Um and uh. It didn't work out and it's not the program's fault. It, it's more so we, we didn't know how to integrate with it. Um since then, the, we've. The NPO, I'm the vice chair of the Metropolitan Planning Organization as well, and we were able to get a, a um, thank you. Um, a full-time mobility manager hired and he's done an exceptional job. And it, I just wanted to bring up that I learned last week that this program has really taken on a life of its own. And now hospitals are wanting to use it for COVID vaccination transportation. Um I've reached out to uh a guy I know, Craig Patricklin, that's really involved in veterans issues and birthed. And there's some needs that veterans have that we can't get to the VA and they need transportation for. So this kind of stuff where we can integrate um governments, integrate nonprofits. To get people around through a single source is, is a great way to get things done if you don't have a transportation district like um. Let's say uh RTD. So I think we're doing a great job just partnering together and offering this to our residents. Um, so that's it. Um and Michelle, I don't know, are you able to show that?
Sorry, you want me to show the video? I'm sorry.
No, if not, it's, I just wanted to show a blee- brief clip of it because when I say Center, Center Low Lane. We also have Amber um from the Birthed Survey on this call. And um it just might be good for, for her to see.
Two seconds, I pulled it up.
Mayor Carspec, that's what I talked about, the transportation barriers. If you make your vaccine appointment, that's who, that's what I was talking about. Is they just started this week with that One Call One Click, the mobility manager.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that portion of it. That's great.
Yeah, no, I just didn't mention it because they, you know, we, they wanted to kind of have the schedulers be able to call them and. But yeah, I talked to Cory, the mobility manager, and that got rolling this week full-time and, and it's working. So. It's, and that came out of Laramo County Office on Aging, that idea of former Commissioner Johnson. And then it got rolling and got that federal grant and now it's in the NPO. So we're very excited about that. And I'm really glad that you're the vice chair.
Oh, thank you. One, from the NPO's perspective, it was not easy uh gathering support for that. And uh your predecessor was actually one of the. One of the advocates and myself and, and I, one or two others, but we are able to convince people. And now I'm seeing some of the people that were kind of hesitant about this, seeing. Oh, I get it. And um primarily, that's some Weld County elected officials. And um they're very rural out there, so they didn't really understand it, but. Um those are the people that really need it most are the really rural communities that have any transportation period. So hopefully they can get some services out of this. Michelle, if you're able to forward initials, just kind of designs, um I just, there's a video about halfway through. Um, keep going. This is their basic one, but they're gonna get a nicer one. There. Start there, yeah. So this is, yeah, that's fine. They were saying we might get a basic version if we don't get all the funding, but I think they did. Centerra kicked in on this. So this is at Centerra. This is right by the uh Best Buy and um the uh Metro Lux there, Candle Parkway. Uh but the idea of a mobility hub, um. Uh I don't know if you want to forward on, essentially, I just want to get to right where the tunnel starts. Uh Birthed won't have. Uh landscaping right away, yes, of course, but um hopefully, there we go. So we'll have an access on our station from the east side only. Loveland's gonna have it on the east and west side. Um but from the east side, uh and it's actually gonna be a much shorter walk than Loveland's. We're gonna have a parking ride right outside. You can walk into this tunnel. And then you're just gonna take a right because Birthed doesn't have access from both sides. So you're gonna take a right. And then you're just going to take a right because Berthad doesn't have access from both sides. So you're going to take a right and you're going to go up a ramp. And from that ramp, um, yeah, so right here in the video, they're talking about all the nice finishing, which is actually really impressive. So hopefully we get there. Um, you're going to walk up and essentially now you're on the middle of uh, I twenty-five and this is the bus thing and um, if you can see that barrier there, the express lane is right in the middle. So these buses are using the express lane like a bus rapid transit system. And um, they'll be able to pull right on and off from the center of I twenty-five versus having to get on the interchange um, on and off ramps, which is both time consuming and, and, and dangerous if you're switching lanes. So um, this is really unique to have uh, in the state of Colorado and um, that Berthad gets one and it's really, really great. So.
That's really cool.
A lot of people that involved that happened. And um, I, we got a ton of other stuff going on. Um, I, I can cut it there. I just did see that uh, I got a graph of what Berthad uh, is going to get in stimulus funding and it looks, I saw two different numbers. One is one point four million, the other is one point seven million. So we'll be somewhere in that range. Um, I don't, we don't have any programs right now, what we would use the stimulus package on, but I'd imagine we'll partner with the chamber and maybe some outside entities or, or offer some programs to businesses and, and maybe some residents this time around, but um, we'll see what the board wants to do. Um, there was another thing. Oh yeah, the transportation, uh, I don't know if you were on that call. Um, Commissioner, you, you seem to have your own calls with the congressmen or commissioners, but um, there was a mayor's call on the, the infrastructure um, funding kind of stimulus that could be a very huge once in a lifetime opportunity. So all the mayors and elected officials were kind of getting out our dream list of stuff and uh, it's just amazing what we might be able to do with a, a large amount of money like this. And uh, I was really surprised and happy to hear that rail seemed to be a priority of a lot of uh, elected officials to uh, on the front range. And um, it's not every elected official, of course, uh, in, in up here in Northern Colorado, certainly. Um, we have a little more separation between our communities and so, but I, I, I'm really glad to see that we're at least looking into it. And uh, we can get some funding to take it to the next uh, environmental um, invite, it's called NEPA, but it's essentially an environmental evaluation. And um, from there, see where it goes. But the other opportunity would be uh, maybe a bus rapid transit system for Northern Colorado. So essentially like the MAX, but connected all the way to Berthet and, and I don't know, somehow take it into Boulder and then the, the rest of the front range, but that's very preliminary. Who knows where the, if we even get this money and, and uh, what, what we could do with the, a massive, massive infrastructure and transportation bill would be incredible. So I will leave it there. So thank you very much. It's really great to hear all your.
And, and since I'm the goal steward for that kind of uh, work in the county, that's kind of under my goal strategic plan. So you, we'll probably be talking more about that. I, that call was earlier this weekend. Um, I was, I listened to a brief section of it. Um, because uh, we had our elected officials lunch, but we sent staff who uh, went in and, and took lots of notes. So yeah, we're getting, we're digging into that. Pretty excited to hear about that possibility and opportunity as well. So.
And it's the wide range, like Mayor Marsh is bringing up trees and that's like, that's huge or water. You know, you think just transportation, but infrastructure, trees are, are a huge part. And we really pride ourselves in Berthet on, on what we're able to do and in really investing and replanning and treating all of our ash uh, publicly owned ash trees for Emerald Ash Board, which is really rare. But um, it, it's huge going forward that we have, we have to replace these huge trees that we, we keep these plants going. Anyway, um, no, it's, it's going to be really great. So thank you. And as far as this transit, um,
Yeah.
I, I'll definitely keep you linked in on our transit study. Michelle was actually uh, instrumental. Um, along with Carrie Rollins on being the facilitator. The county has a great facilitation program. And um, we weren't really getting anywhere without a facilitator and um, it was great to have the county step in there and we were able to express ourselves and be professional. And uh, we all walked away with a, a clear view, um, the town and, and um, raft that we're really on the same page. So it was great to have Michelle uh, uh, doing that for us. So thank you very much.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have Michelle. She's a, a very professionally and talented uh, woman who uh, I'm very lucky that she's doing, helping me do these community conversations. So.
Yeah, yeah. Also just that program, it's just incredible to have a facilitation program. It's, it's a publicly, it's a public entity. So it's not like we're going out for RFPs and oh, who's signing the check here? Who's this facilitator going to listen to? No, this is publicly owned. Uh, Michelle and, and Carrie come in as neutral. It's just an interview. It was, it was really great. So I, I encourage you to keep that program going and expanding if at all possible. I know that you, like me, really um, liked what um, I'm blanking out on the professor's name at CSU, but the.
Dr. Carcason.
Yes.
Center, Center for Public Deliberation. Actually, I have an event today with them that you're all welcome to join us. Our intergenerational conversations that will be facilitated by uh, CSU and Center for Public Deliberation and it's teenagers having conversations with older adults over the age of sixty. And um, Michelle, I can, I will try to see if I can send that. Um, it's on my, it's on uh, the CS, uh, PFAC or CSU Center for Publication website. Um, I'll see. Um, and uh, everyone's welcome and we're going to be talking a non-political way. We're going to talk about free speech and how words matter. And, and, and um, so I'm, it was brought to us by a student out of Rocky Mountain High School who wanted to have this conversation. And um, and there will be, it's not a, like I said, it's not political. This is just really kind of a um, a different diet. They're called living room conversations. We've been doing that project for about three years. My daughter came up with this idea after my dad had fallen and was isolated and we see teens all the time on their phones or all of us are on our phones and technology and how do we teach folks to have, sit down and have a conversation face to face um, about, about tough topics and how we listen and really see that um, we can agree to disagree and still get along and be friends, right? And um, and so we've been doing that in person and we've had, we had a hundred and thirty people one time in, in a room. And with the COVID hit, we got, no, we have to keep doing these because people are going to even be more isolated. And so we've been doing them virtually. And we break out into small groups of four to five people. Um, well, sometimes ten and we try to make them even older and younger adults. And we have about fifty people signed up today. So we have about uh, slots for twenty-five more people want to do that. So um, so I'll see if I can send that to Michelle. And. It's at one thirty. Um, there's a link.
I've been looking for it, but I can't find it, Jody. I'm sorry.
Mr., what I wanted to say is, if, at all, if there's an expansion opportunity or partnership with them, I've tried to reach out individually and um, it's just hard to, in, not any, any knock against him, but it's hard to get on their schedule and with students, but if the county was able to, it'd be great to have the county as kind of expanding some of these uh, deliberation programs because once folks see the value, and they're always going to be, in my opinion, most of the time they're going to be tough conversations, but that's the value of, of direct citizen to citizen, you know, input there. So uh, I would love to advocate to give the county funding to expand that program. So awesome.
Yeah, so Michelle, I'm going to send you the link with the, um, through uh, Facebook Messenger. Because that's the quickest way I can do it right now. And it's of course not.
That works.
And so anybody have any burning desire questions? If not, um, knowing why this is taking.
Questions in the Q and A box, but I would encourage people, if they want to raise their hands. Um, now is the time to do so.
So I gotta jump off to relieve my uh, very thankful of my mother here for taking over. Um, but I'll, I gotta pick up my delivery duties again, but um, Commissioner, are these going to be at the same, same time? Are you planning?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna do a survey now that you're uh, taking off Mayor Carrespec and ask people what days work. Um, do we want to do these monthly? Do we want to do them every other month? Do we want to do them um, with other folks? Um, with other towns. Um, you and I will be meeting monthly, having conversations with anyone else and Sergeant Anderson, if you'd like to join those, we can have a monthly gathering um, and talk about things for Berthet. So um, sorry, Michelle, I'm looking for your thing. Um, so uh, we, that's what we're going to ask because we want to make sure that people are going to come and and uh, be um, you know, um, find this useful. And so we're going to have the survey. So I'm just going to let Michelle ask those questions real quick while I find this.
That'll be perfect. I can kind of run the poll here while you're looking. I can't do two things at once. So I understand that. So right now I got to pull up asking kind of what are the best days of the week? Obviously this is a Saturday, so um, we know it's a little biased towards Saturdays given our audience, but we are looking to see maybe some different days might work for folks. I'm here in Berthet, so.
I can't vote, but I love the idea that you guys did on Saturday. Um, and maybe Commissioner, if I did one for like a mayor town hall and had, or some other thing, I could do it on a weekday evening or, or weekday time, but I love the Saturday idea. I didn't do a good job of getting the word out about this, but I think we might have some more attendance going forward. But um, it might be good for folks to have a weekend, weekend opportunity to, and I know I'm making both your lives a ton harder, but um,
Okay.
Great for outreach.
I do get paid to be here, so it's
All right.
Saturday. Um, so it looks like Thursdays and Saturdays. So um, that's not unsurprised. I don't know what Thursdays are a super popular day um, to do community meetings. So I'm going to share the results just for y'all to see them. Thursdays and Saturdays. And then we are going to do a second question, which is what time of day works best for everybody? So um, again, we were kind of mid-morning is what I would have called this. So it doesn't surprise me that you all are liking mid-morning. Um, but depending on, sometimes on Saturdays, people want to go earlier. Um, definitely during the week, people tend to want to go later, but feel free to let us know. It looks like people are almost done voting and you can select more than one. Maybe everything works for you. Okay, it looks like everybody's voted, so we're going to end polling and I'm going to share results. Mid-morning was the big winner, which was kind of what I would consider today. We did mid-morning, right? Um, so it's all over the board, so that's good. So I'm going to stop sharing results and we do appreciate your guys' input. Um, and it looks like I just got the link from Commissioner to share. So let me try to grab that. It is a Facebook link. I.
And I'll just, I'll just wrap it up because I know Mayor Carrespec has to run. I want to thank Sergeant Anderson for being here today. Um, and everyone else, I appreciate your time and your engagement and um, this is really my opportunity to hear directly from you and have a conversation and hear about the, the um, issues and concerns or, or things you want to celebrate like Mayor Carrespec showed about the transportation grant they got. So we can just really focus on um, the concerns and, and questions you have for the Berthet and southern part of the county area. So um, I really appreciate your engagement. I hope, maybe you'll bring your friend next time or share. You try to make these short and sweet and um, useful. So um, that you're finding these are helpful. So um, would love your feedback. And again, we're, Mayor Carrespec, thank you so much for being here. I look forward to our.
Pleasure. Thank you um, for, yeah, offering this. It's incredible to hear what you guys are doing. Um, Sergeant Anderson and the sir, uh, Amber with the surveyor or Rudy sometimes, uh, when we did this with uh, Tom uh, would regularly be in attendance. So sometimes it was just a really small crew and other times, depending on what was going on in the region. And um, yeah, no, it's totally your meeting. If uh, I can find other presenters, uh, if, if you'd like. Um, but anyway, it's great uh, to have you as Commissioner and welcome and I'm really impressed with what you're doing so far. So thank you.
Well, I didn't share everything. We'll share some more things about the counties. So also, I'll share about our remote worker uh, stipend and how we've kind of leading the way with that as well. So we'll talk about a little bit uh, that next time. If you guys have some topics you want us to uh, bring forward some information and, and I'd love to uh, educate everybody how important the county is in your everyday life. This impacts your daily life. And I want my goal is the next uh, my first term is to make sure we um, educate and bring awareness to everyone in the county, how important the county government is to your daily life. And um, whether you live in a city, municipality, um, in the mountains, on the foothills or, you know, out in the eastern, on a, on a farm, it is really critical and it's um, I'd like to make sure one knows how their county government works hard for them. So thanks again, everybody. Have a great weekend. I'm so thrilled to see um, all of you. Great to have a conversation with you, Sergeant Anderson, Michelle. As always, fantastic job. Appreciate you facilitating this and um, again, reach out to me, have my contact information. I look forward to hearing from you all. Have a great day.
Thank you guys.